Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call the 2023 Town of Rockingham Annual Meeting to Order. Good evening. As many of you may know, I'm Paul Obahostie, and I'll be your moderator for tonight's meeting. I was appointed by the Board of Selectmen to fill in for Ray Masuko, your elected town moderator who has passed away. At this time, please stand, if you are able, and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance within the right of the United States of America, where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we observe a moment of silence for Ray Masuko. Ray was a dedicated town resident who was active in the town, the village, and the community. Ray served as both town and village legal counsel, served on the library board, and is a member of the Rockingham BCA for many years. He was chairman of the Board of the Rockingham Health Center and one of the founders of The Roots on the River, to name a few. Please bow your head at this time as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Please sit. As moderator, I would ask your indulgence and patience as we work our way through tonight's meeting. I have no doubt that you will kindly and gently call any errors to my attention. This would be a real good time to please shut off your cell phone and pagers if you have not done so. The meeting will be conducted according to Roberts Rules of Order, except as modified by state statutes. You can change, you can't change state law, but you can choose to modify Roberts Rules with a two-thirds majority vote. General Roberts had pages of rules for decorum during debate. I hope that it will not be necessary to remind you to conduct yourself in a civil and polite manner. As Mike Hardy, our long-serving town moderator, always said, "We arrived as neighbors and friends, and we will leave as such." Please stand, if possible, and state your name when recognized. You will have to forgive me if I do not call on everyone by name, but I'll do my best. We have a runner with a microphone, so please wait until they reach you before you begin your speech. Please address all comments to me as the moderator, and I will either answer or redirect them to somebody who can respond. Only registered voters may speak unless by the leave of the Assembly, which requires two-thirds vote if there is an objection. Unless there is an objection, I will assume there is a leave of the Assembly for town officials who may not be resident voters to address the Assembly for the purpose of explanation during this meeting. Those who are eligible to vote were given a voter card. The purpose of those is to allow us to identify you as a voter who has passed through the checklist. On the division, please hold your card up so that everyone is comfortable that only voters are voting. On a paper ballot, the clerk will mark your card as you pass through the line so that we can be assured that folks only vote once. Those articles requiring an Australian ballot vote tomorrow will be taken up for discussion only, and no other action other than discussion can take place on them at this meeting. I will strive to make any ruling that I'm called upon in an impartial and correctly as I can. Any ruling of the moderator can be challenged immediately after the ruling. I will explain my ruling, and if you are not satisfied, all it takes is a request to challenge the ruling and to put the, put it to a vote of the Assembly. Debate on the motion to appeal the ruling of the Chair is generally in order. It is my job to assist you in accomplishing the business of this meeting. Please, please raise your hand and ask questions. If you think that something that is happening is wrong, or you don't understand what is happening, or if you want to do something but don't know how to proceed, you must be recognized by the moderator to address the Assembly. I will try to recognize all those who wish to speak in an orderly fashion, getting around to all those who wish to speak but haven't yet had the opportunity. Before returning to those who have already spoken, a person may only speak twice on an issue and is limited to 10 minutes total. I hope that you will be brief and not feel that you need to use up all of your time or replow the ground that you or someone else has already gone over. A motion must be made, seconded, and restated by the moderator before debate on the motion begins. In most instances, only two amendments will be allowed on the floor at any one time. That is, one amendment to the main motion and one amendment to the amendment where appropriate. It requires a motion, a second, and two-thirds vote to cut off debate and call the question. You have to be recognized to make that motion. You just can't shout it out because you are tired of the debate. The motion to close debate is non-debatable. By state statute, once voters have acted on a question and taken up the next item of business, they cannot reconsider the action at this meeting. Voting will be done by voice vote unless the Chair is endowed, in which case there will be a division. Also, any voter may call for a division as long as we have not started the next item of business. Any voter may also move to vote by paper ballot during debate or before we have moved on to the next order of business, in which case the vote will be by ballot. If the call for a ballot is sustained by at least six other members, action under other business cannot require expenditures of funds nor can it be binding upon the town. Any action under other business is advisory only. So I'd like to introduce some of the people sitting up front here. First, we have Kathleen Nehock, our town clerk, Alyssa Harlow, our finance director, Scott Pickham, our town manager, and then going across the front are our, our board members, Elijah Zimmer, Bonnie Northrup, Peter Golick, Chair, Rick Cowan, and Sue Hammond, Vice Chair. Prior to the reading of tonight's warning, I would like to read the dedication of this year's annual report. The Rockingham Town Report this year is dedicated to Tom and Sally McPhee. For, for many years, they have been active in the town, village, and our community. Tom served on the BFUHS Board for 10 years, five as chairman. His tenure on the town select board was for 12 years, 10 years as chairman, and six years as a, as the Bellows Falls Village President. Tom was actively involved in several community organizations, including the Bellows Falls High School Alumni Association Rotary Club. He's an incorporator of the Greater Rockingham Area Service. To mention a few, Tom was Alumni Association Grand Marshal for the 1993 parade. In the fall, Tom could be found at the BFUHS football games, working on the chain gang along the sidelines, watched over by Sally, who was also at the game. Sally has served as a justice of peace for 16 years as of this writing, including attending Board of Abatement and Board of Adjustment meetings, and is still going strong. She can be seen at the polls each year. Sally is, is active in many community organizations, including 20 years in the Bellows Falls Women's Club, 30 years in the Bellows Falls Masonic Temple Board of Directors, and is a member of Eastern Star. Tom and Sally also dedicated 10 years to the Rockingham Swim Team. Tom as a referee, and Sally keeping score. They were the co-recipient of the 2003 Springfield Savings and Loan Community Peoples Award. Thank you both. And at this point, I'll recognize Peter with a...
Yeah, in response to that, we got a letter from Tom and Sally. I'd like to read that. Sue and I showed up to their house on the 7th of February to deliver their town report and asked them to look inside the cover. And I'll read it as it says, "Sally and I were completely taken by surprise when you and Susan stopped by on, on 2/7/23 to hand us the annual town report and told us to open to the dedication page." Please thank the Board for selecting us, and please read, or have the moderator Paul, read the following statement at the annual meeting. The note's statement is as follows, "Unfortunately, we are not able to join you at the annual business meeting this evening. I believe they're in Florida." "We are honored beyond words at this year's Rockingham Annual Report dedicated to us. Over the years, we got involved because we saw a need and were encouraged to take up the challenge, which at times we didn't with reluctance. The road wasn't always the smoothest, but the experience was unbelievable, and we have had an incredible journey. Looking back, we were living the Rotary International motto of services above self and didn't even know it. God bless this town and all that reside in it," and it's signed by Tom and Sally. Thank you.
At this time, I would also like to highlight that tonight's meeting has a Zoom link, but also highlight that voting by Zoom is not permitted. The warning for tonight and tomorrow has an introductory paragraph which reads as follows. "The legal voters of the Town of Rockingham and the Town of Rockingham School District are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Town Hall Lower Theater, Bellows Falls Opera House, 7th Square, in said town on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM to act upon all articles for expenditure of public funds. Then to adjourn, March 7, 2023, to the Masonic Temple, 61 West Minister Street in said town at 8:00 AM to vote by Australian ballot on Article 1. Monday's meeting may also be seen via Zoom at 929-205-6099, meeting ID 696830477. Please note, voting by Zoom is not permitted." We will now move on to the Articles. Article 1. "To elect town officials and school district officers as required by law." This is an Australian ballot item. And therefore, you will be voting on that tomorrow at the Masonic Temple. Article 2, "To receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year." Elijah.
Article 2 is to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year.
So we have a motion has been made and seconded "to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year." Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of receiving and acting upon the reports of the town officers for the past year would say aye. Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 2 is passed. Moving on to Article 3. "Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payments of money due the town from the State of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds?" Sue?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payment of money due the town from State of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made and seconded that the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payment of money due the town to the State of Vermont for highway or other purposes, or payment to the town from federal funds. Is there any discussion? This is really kind of a housekeeping article that allows both Select Board and, and the Treasurer to borrow money if they so need to. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor would say aye. Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 3 is passed. Moving on to Article 4. "Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate ways after required public input?" Rick?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate ways after required public input.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the Select Board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate ways as required by, after required public input. Is there any discussion? And again, I think this is kind of a housekeeping motion that allows the Select Board to go out and seek other funds and, and to spend those funds after public input. Yes?
Laurel Green, I'm a resident. Laurel Green, I'm a resident here in Bellows Falls. And my question is, is this grant funds? Are there other kinds? Give me an idea.
Yeah, there's grant funds and all kinds of different funds out there. Gary Fox is the master of grant availability. What's out there, what we're applied for, what we're hoping to get, what we're not going to get, and what's required, and there's...
Any other questions or comments? Seeing no question or other questions or comments, the motion has been made by the voters of the Town of Rockingham to authorize the Select Board to seek out and/or accept funds available from non-property tax revenue sources and to spend those funds in appropriate way after required public input. All those in favor would say aye. Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 4 is passed. We move to Article 5. Article 5, "Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,314,959 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024, with $4,883,261 to be raised by taxes." Peter?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the Town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,314,959 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, with $4,883,261 to be raised.
Is there a second?
Mr. Moderator, I have a second.
Just a second, and I'll come right back. So the motion has been made that the voters of the Town of Rockingham and been seconded that the voters of the Town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,314,959 to pay all other general and regular expenses of the town beginning July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2024, with $4,883,261 to be raised.
This article is just for... The projects, the reserve funds, etc. Item, Article 6 to 11 are articles that are calling for a vote. I'm not quoted in this vote. Last year, it always... The question put the numbers in it, and then voting again, not here. Regular issues, but anyway. We, we are voted on, I say, I didn't say that. If this article passes, Article 5, the tax rate estimated tax rate is a following four cents. Articles 6 to 11 that pass will add 12 more cents to arrive at a final estimated tax of $1.64 increase over last year, which was a following 12 cents. This increase results on an $80 per year increase in taxes, which also varies to $20,000. Ladies and gentlemen, affecting the budget. We now have a full-time HR person. Assistant will be hired within...
He's here.
Why not? I could, I could put the mic away and talk better than I always like, but that's another story.
Before saying, "We're serious." He locked up, but the house could pick it up.
All right. We also have a vacancy in zoning and health. Gary Fox has been temporarily a zoning person. And Sean McGinnis is a deputy health officer. All right, so the health insurance rates this year went up 11%. We changed the program a little bit on the insurance rates. We offered the employees a better plan, more money, but on the other end, we take the other side because we'll take incentive with it. We're getting private money, getting 15%. Well, let's read. Okay, let me start without this. Page 24, payday account, shows reserve accounts for fire equipment of $50,000, Deco Street Bridge at $50,000. Page 30 will show you that the Broadway Mills Road debt has been retired. Currently in the process of union negotiations. Now, page 15, if you turn that page on recycling revenue proposed FY '24 budget shows a printing area there. Soda can, plate goods, and brown goods CD lines should be moved down one notch because they're, they just don't match up, and they're in the wrong, so.
Page 15.
Page 20, recycling expenses. Initial solid waste line has been included in the recycling totals because previously it was shown separately on the separate line item. And it kind of, if you looked at the recycling expenses, you thought we were doing a wonderful job coming out in a break-even proposition, but then when you add the transport costs of about $50,000 to it, it kind of sold off. So we get the two costs of the recycling operation, we added it in to the recycling costs this year. Page 28, highway expenses. You'll see an unusually large item for paving. With the Broadway Mills project being retired, there's $240,000, $224,000 that we are able to not have to spend for the debt. So hopefully, we are going to be using that in the paving, and hopefully, we will be eligible for highway aid from the state and paving. Also, in regard to paving, the paving will be taken, will be done in Bellows Falls over the next two years. It'll be going from Oak Street this year, from Oak Street South, and next year, Oak Street to North Town. Old Terrace area will need new subgrade base gravel, as test foots have shown that the core material. Sidewalk will be addressed, statute of government BF has money and time permits. Page 33, the library budget is shown for information, but we voted on it Article 7. We have applied $250,000 of underside fund balance to the budget this year, which leaves a record amount of amounts of 15 to 20% of budget per county guidelines. We were successful in collecting delinquent taxes, and we'd like to thank the Finance Department for their diligence on that. And we had a tax sale this year. Town purchased one property on Old Terrace, it's the house that's boarded up, if you've been up that way. At one point, there was a developer that was going to take all three properties and demolished them all and build new buildings there. Well, something happened that that isn't proceeding, I think, I don't know if Gary is still here, but there's, I think there's one year left on that motion that they can go ahead and complete that project if that's still going. Four others were sold. And just remind everybody that even though we bought the properties this year, the, the people have a year to redeem the taxes on it, so. Will take any questions?
Any other questions or comments on Article 5? Yes? Yes.
Just a second, ma'am.
Okay, sure, this is worth it. My name is Susan Brace. I live in Markinsville. And it was just a question on page 22, general fund expenses. There's a line for transfers out, $75,000. Transfers out to where? What does that mean?
I'm going to refer that to either the manager or finance. I think that was to do with a railroad station that we had gotten our grant, so we received it in one area and brought it back out to the grant, to the railroad station area. Am I correct? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. That's what it is.
It's train. Can you explain that a little?
Yeah, we voted on that last fall, last year at town meeting. It was voted 75,000. So the money goes into, into the budget and it's transferred over to the railroad account.
Okay. Alright, it would have been clearer if it said transfer out to railroad account. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Paul. I gotta have some more.
Cass, so why don't we bring the mic over there since we're kind of on that side of the room, and then I'll come back to this side.
Paul, I think I can speak up enough without the mic casters saving. So just jumping around, Peter, I appreciate you having about six different pages on five different articles. Jamie Barrett, by the way, president. So for our indebtedness in the paving projects coming to Bell's Falls this year, are we coinciding with remounting power and any other utilities to get anything corrected prior to digging this all up and paving it? So we're not, you know, following the cart with the horse.
Yeah, as I know, the old area that's going to be dead, any, any real construction on is the Old Terrace area, which is the avenues A and B from the street, which is, if you ever been up there, they are in tough shape. And like they dug test pits and found the subbase gravel was, was poor quality. So they're going to be doing some work over there. The rest of it is probably just some milling and overlay pavement.
And just the one last thing, recycled center.
Yeah.
I saw different numbers. And what are we, what's the actual cost to the ratepayers to operate that? Because I see that, you know, continually the employee benefits or payroll is going up and up. And I see that we're shipping stuff brown goods. What's the actual cost? Peter, would you like to take that question again?
Yeah, the actual cost is what's shown in the budget. About $311,000 right now. Currently, I think we're somewhere around last budget printout we got, which would have been for February. But somewhere in the vicinity, the expenses are running probably around about $200,000 right now. So it leaves a little bit of extra funds for the next three or four months to complete that budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? By your, Cass. Wayne Blanchard. Wayne, just a second till you get the mic, please.
Are we about to vote on this right now?
Yeah.
Well, as soon as discussion is done, that is correct.
I don't understand how it's legal. If we voted last, in the last town meeting, polled this by Australian ballot, how is it legal for us to vote here tonight?
I think a lot of that was based around COVID-19 is why.
But we held a vote. I mean, if you look at the minutes that we approved in Article 2, there's a vote there with considerable, you know. I mean, it wasn't close. I mean, it was overwhelmingly that we wanted to do this by Australian ballot.
Let me explain this to you a little bit, the legality of this whole thing. You cannot vote and use the Australian ballot in the same year. So what we did last year, you voted Australian ballot and also voted to use the Australian ballot. So it was technically illegal. The village did the same thing with their budget. They ended up being the same way. They devoted to vote Australian ballot and, and then they voted it the same way. You cannot do both the same year. They have to be a year separate. Which if you go and you look at your warning article, there is an article this year to ask that question, would we want to vote Australian ballot for 2024? And this is all run through the Secretary of State and anybody else who could find it, get it out. I think Steve Proctor was the one that actually brought up the error of the ways. And that started the whole discussion. So technically, that's why we're voting by, at town meeting by floor vote. And that voting will be by floor vote tonight, whether you vote Australian ballot in the future or not. Claire's month?
Claire's month, yeah. Seems fishy to me.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. It would keep her waiting. Don't end with it.
Deborah Wright, that wouldn't be good. Deborah Wright, and we are using the microphone because back has to pick it up, and those people over there have to hear us too, so I'm on back. Three questions, one of them is on page 14. It's about taxes that are now predicted to go down $400,000. And according to what you've got budgeted, it's $400,000 less than, than this current fiscal year. So that's one question. Would you like to answer each one in turn?
Yeah.
Okay.
So looking at page 14, it looks like under tax reven, under revenues, taxes, property tax revenue, Deb has pointed out that taxes are going to go down 400,000. Do we have any answer for it?
Right, yeah. The reason that is there, because if you look at the amount the rate be raised by taxes is less this year than what before. And that is because the articles that are being voted separately are going to bring it back up.
Okay, reduce that number.
Whatever you vote tonight will be added on.
Want me to add to that? Yeah, so, so that number will change in the actual budget after the voting is done. And I have the tally. I see. To be raised by taxes will be whatever the rest of the vote is. Okay, alright, so then it will raise based on that. Okay, second question. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Page 20. It has to do with the recycling expenses, which according to what you've got for revenue and what we've got for expenses are off by like $70,000 difference wise, what you budgeted to spend and what you budgeted to receive. But my concern had to do with, how much money do we spend on the new shed to handle the swill and recycle tires? The new building, shed down there, yeah.
So Peter, are you going to take that?
I believe it was somewhere in the vicinity of $17,000 for that shed. We had, we contacted 15 individual contractors. Nobody would reply to us. I finally dug up two of them. One was at $33,000 and the other one is $40,000. And I had to be going out Satchel River and Fred Bullock's house. And there was a contractor in there working on his house. I pulled in and asked him if he might be interested. And like all alone behold, he got the job.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'd, we'd have been.
Why do we need to replace it?
Because if you ever looked at that shed that was there before going in, it was leading to the left, and the only thing holding it up was a little shed on the end. And that wasn't wired behind it. So it would all collapse to the left.
Thank you for answering that question. But again, the revenues don't catch up with the expenses.
That's, that's because you're going to see that $54,000 or $55,000 line was a separate line item before. So if you take that off of those totals that you see there, you see it's going to be coming closer. Our intent with the recycling is a break-even.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So that's, that's why that's there.
Thank you. Last one is on page 23. Has to do with recreation. Sorry, just going to turn my page. Recreation, looking at, we spent a lot of money over the last several years. Probably some of us remember those dollars we spent on the skito and all that. We have $1,000 in wages for someone to handle the skito. But we have not, according to this, we haven't made any money with passes to even compensate having someone watch that skito, plus the thousands of dollars you put in, in the rope replaced every year. So like someone to try and make me understand why the rec is at $157,000 for 2024. And we don't seem to promote our services, recreation, very well. Thank you.
Part of the problem with the expenses on the skito was the rope. We had replaced rope, I think, twice. So that being the case, I think it ran about $4,000, $5,000, somewhere like that. So that was the point there. The snow, as you can see this year, has been slimmering on. It's kind of hard to ski on grass. So that's why you don't get much of a turnout for the, for the ski. The pool and area seems to be taking care of itself. But as, as someone told me, if you don't have recreation available, you're not going to get anything. So it probably is going to be a losing, a losing proposition. It's never going to break even as far as ones I've been on the board. I've never seen it break even, but we're trying.
Any other questions or comments on Article 5? Seeing no other questions or comments. The motion has been made that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,314,959 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024, with $4,883,261 to be raised by taxes. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 5 has passed. We'll now move on to Article 6. Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $93,978 to be allocated to the following social service agencies as indicated. And I can read the list if you'd like, or.
That's okay.
I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $93,978 to be allocated to the following social service agencies. And let me read them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $93,978 to be allocated to the following social service agencies as indicated. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 6 has passed. Moving on to Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $435,249 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library with $379,250 to be raised by taxes. Peter.
Mr. Moderator, I move the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $439,35,249 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion. Article 7 reads, and the motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $435,249 in operating expenses for support of the Rockingham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes. All those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 7 has passed. Moving on to Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $103,000 to fund the town portion of the Rockingham Meeting House structural repair for the purpose of preservation by matching its existing grant funding opportunities? Rep.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we, the town of Rockingham, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $103,000 to fund the town portion of the Rockham Meeting House structural repairs for the purposes of preservation by matching existing grant funding opportunities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $103,000 to fund the town's portion of the Rockingham Meeting House structural repair for the purpose of preservation by matching existing grant funding opportunities. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just want people to know that we have obtained a grant of $360,000, congressional spending grant for the repair of this, this building. So the money you're trying to raise tonight and some APF funds will be applied. And I think the total ends up being somewhere around $720,000 for the repair of that building. And if you want us to see material out in the hallway, and if you've been in the library, there's material there. Or if you attended the meeting where the leaders of the Papazian presented the report that went on for about an hour of the condition of that house, that building, you'll understand why we're trying to get this set aside.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. The motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $103,000 to fund the town's portion of the Rockingham Meeting House structural repairs for the purpose of preservation by matching existing grant funding opportunities. All those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article 8 has passed. Moving on to Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,000 to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with $22,000 to be raised by taxes? Elijah.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,000 to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with $22,000 to be raised by taxes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,000 to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with $22,000 to be raised by taxes. Is there any discussion?
Just one question, Paul.
Sure.
So to raise 22,000, I'm just wondering, what is the capital reserve fund currently?
Just a second, we'll have that answered.
22,000, I believe, in there. We put in about that amount the last couple of years.
And we, we use that every year.
It was on January third.
Uh, any, any repairs, uh, along with any grants that we've gotten to go with it, Jamie?
Actually, I think the answer to that question, according to Gary Fox, is there's a hundred and nine eighty-five, hundred and nine thousand eight...
One oh nine, five eighty-five on January third. You're pretty close to that now.
Stand corrected.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
As we move forward, I'd just like to ask Peter, um, again, it's a dollar four per hundred for Article Five, Article Five pass, which did...
Correct.
All the other articles together add, how much more?
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents. Okay. That was, I just want to make sure I take it down right.
I can give them to you if you want. I have them.
Okay, so it'll be one hun, one dollar and sixteen cents per hundred.
That is correct.
With all passes. Thank you.
If there are any passes.
Any other questions or comments? So Article Nine, the motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty two thousand dollars to fund the Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund with twenty two thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. All those in favor of the motion would say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed would say no? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And Article Nine has passed. Article Ten. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars to fund the maintenance of the BF Riverfront Park with one thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. Bonnie?
Uh, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars to help fund the maintenance of the Bellas Falls Historical Society's Riverfront Park with one thousand dollars to be raised by taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made, seconded, that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate the son, sum of one thousand dollars to fund the maintenance of the BF Riverfront Park with one thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed would say no? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And Article Ten has passed. Moving on to Article Eleven. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars to fund a contract with Wyndham County Sheriff for the purpose of providing public safety services in the town of Rockingham with six thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. Sue?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars to fund a contract with the Wyndham County Sheriff for the purpose of providing public safety services to the town, in the town of Rockingham with six thousand dollars to be raised by taxes.
So the motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And Peter, seconded it? Motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars to fund the contract of the Wyndham County Sheriff's for the purpose of providing public safety services in the town of Rockingham with six thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. Are any questions or comments? So, yes, we'll, I'm going to start on that side and stay over on that side.
My name is Michelle, I have two questions. Is the, um, are the police going to patrol only in Rockingham or in Bellas Falls, Rockingham, Saxon's River, et cetera?
Somebody on the board can answer that?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. Uh, we, we debated this at several, uh, board meetings, uh, because there's a plea that came from, uh, Village of Bartonville that wanted to protect, uh, coverage up there because of drug trafficking, speeding, et cetera. Uh, we had the sheriff in, I think there's one here tonight that can answer any other questions and tell you how much it's going to get to for patrol. Um, so it, the intention was that they were always going to provide services only to Bartonville.
No, rural Rockingham. Rural Rockingham.
The intention was that, extend it and out being to the whole of rural Rockingham. So it's everything but the Bellas Falls Village, as far as I understand.
For two hours a month? Is that what it is?
So, so I guess the second question from you is, how many hours per week?
It, it really is up to, we have to then negotiate with the, um, with the Sheriff's Department of how we could use that six thousand dollars. It could be, we could do it on a weekly basis. We could decide we want to have, you know, one day a week, a one day a month, or we could do it just a intensive few periods of time throughout the year. It's something we haven't even started that negotiations with.
Well, how much is it per hour?
It's sixty, sixty something dollars per, sixty-two dollars per hour.
So you're talking less than a hundred hours?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right behind you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Steve Tripp, and I live in Lower Bartonsville. A group of residents came to the select board last summer wanting their help for a situation in Lower Bartonsville, which we later learned, uh, applies to many other areas of rural Rockingham, including Brockville, Brockway's Mills, uh, other outlying areas that don't currently have dedicated policing services for speeding, drugs. Essentially, our, our plea was, who do we call? Who do we call to, uh, to get a response from, um, from the police department? And obviously, we don't have access to Bellas Falls Police Department. And we found out that there's contractual services available from the sheriff's office. And the state police came and told us, um, and I completely understand where they're coming from, um, we don't have the manpower to take care of anything other than shootings, assaults, deaths, and, and things of that nature. So we left the meetings, many of them, understanding that there, there is no one to call. There, there is no one to call. And, and so our request for the six thousand dollars was to see, we're, we're trying to plant the seed to get a presence in our outlying areas. Because we have none. We have none currently. And, um, we hope that you all support that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Jim McCall of Bellas Falls. Uh, I think, I've got a question and a comment. I think the, the question is, uh, was this voted on by the select board because of a petition? Or was it just, uh, comments that came in and the select board decided that they would, um, propose coverage for rural Rockingham?
Okay, Peter, would you?
You hit it right on the head.
Okay.
They came and asked, and we decided, uh, we, we honored their request and we put it into place holder, the six thousand dollars, and see what we could come up with.
Okay. Well, I think everybody knows where this is going. Uh, I'm in the, I live in the village of Bellas Falls, and, uh, since I've been back here, we got two opportunities to merge the town and the village. But rural Rockingham sounded, uh, voted that down because they didn't want to pay for the policing. So the village of Bellas Falls taxpayers, who by the same way have the same taxpayers in the town of Rockingham, pay one hundred percent of the cost of our policing. I believe that the village of Saxon's River, uh, has some limited coverage, and I believe the village of Saxon's River pays for that coverage. Now we're being asked, uh, the select board is asking the, the taxpayers of Bellas Falls that are paying over a million dollars for police services, and the Saxon's River taxpayers who are paying whatever they're paying to pay our share of rural Rockingham. So the obvious question is, why aren't they paying for it? If they want the coverage, bill them for the coverage. Don't burden the Bellas Falls taxpayers or the, or the taxpayers in, in Saxon's River for this request. Because let's face it, as a couple of the entities have mentioned, uh, six thousand isn't much police coverage, and it, it can only grow. And so I think in, in part of fairness, uh, this ought to be, should be achieved. I think the other question that I would ask the select board for future reference is that if, if you feel this way about rural Rockingham, why don't you propose to provide police services for the town of Rockingham? I think it's only appropriate and fair. As a Bellas Falls resident, we'd be happy to have you take that over. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Susan Grace, again, also more with Bartonsville. Uh, but I notice, uh, there are many things in, in this budget that cover, um, other areas that I don't live in. Uh, I rarely use the sidewalks in Saxon's River, but I see ten thousand dollars in our highway fund expense for that. And there are other common expenditures that don't directly affect the people that live in rural Rockingham. Uh, but we do all share this town, and I would ask the people that I share the town with to support the folks in the rural parts of Rockingham. And the merger vote, that was years ago, um, I don't even remember whether it was during the time that I, I've been here for fifteen years. I think there was one vote in that period. Uh, but that's not on the table right now, unless somebody wants to try it again. Uh, but I, I would say there are many things that go, I don't have children in the schools anymore, but I support the school budget. Um, there are a lot of things like that that don't specifically affect each one of us, and yet they are part of our co, the common good that we need to share the expenses for. And, and that's why we should vote in favor of this proposition. Thank you.
Questions or comments? I'm going to stay on that side for right now.
Are you ready?
Yes, Charlie.
I got the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name is Wendy Levy. I live in Bellas Falls. I fully support Article Eleven. I, as I said, I live in Bellas Falls Village, and people who live in the town of Rockingham are part of my community. Being part of community means being responsible to and for everyone who lives in it, from infants to elders. That's why, like Ms. Grace said, even though I have no children, I am happy to pay the school taxes. My safety depends on the safety of others. And while I would love to see the select board and town departments work with the Wyndham Regional Commission or other entities to implement traffic calming plans, right now, we have the obligation to do something to help our neighbors. And the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department is the tool we can use. Six thousand dollars equals something like two dollars per taxpayer for the entire year. It's slightly more than we spend on fireworks. Please join me in voting in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
Morning. Uh, what Mr. McCall brought up about, uh...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, Charlie Jaris. Um, what Mr. McCall brought up about, uh, the town and the village, thinking about bringing together a, a full police department for all of Rockingham, um, I think is, is something that the, the town, the village continue to think about. Unfortunately, crime is on the increase in all aspects. Uh, and one of the things, I had a catalytic converter, you know, cut off my RV, and, uh, I called the state police, and that gentleman over there said, uh, about the state police, only dealing with really serious crimes. So I think the, the town of Rockingham should continue to have a real serious talk about having a, a police force for all of Rockingham. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Amy Hullett from the village of Saxon's River. We do have a contract with the Sheriff's Department. Um, historically, we are a separate municipality, and I think it's history that gives us that contract. This seems like a reasonable proposal to explore what is happening in rural Rockingham. And although I live in the village of Saxon's River, I am in rural Rockingham pretty much every day. I drive to Springfield or to Grafton or anywhere else, I'm in rural Rockingham. And as a, as a resident who avails herself of the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department, I'm grateful for the job they do mostly with speakers.
Cast right behind you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Koffey. I'm also a, a Lower Bartonsville resident, and, um, we did spend, um, many hours, um, at meetings trying to lobby for some sort of peace enforcement. Um, we have tried. This was the best option that was afforded us and was in part of each night for the vote. And it is the safety of our residents, children, families. Um, there's a lot of drugs, I know, as we mentioned. Thank you. Um, and those drugs will come from Springfield through here, and we are the first stop on that road. So we're seeing hypodermic needles and drug pills in the afternoon, late week at us. And so please consider the less than two dollars a week that it would cost for us to have some protection in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
Thank you. The legislature has brought this issue of town policing up many times and has never gone through. The future of policing for our communities is for us to be more proactive about doing so. I agree with Mr. McCall concerning the tax base of six thousand dollars to the village trustees or village residents who are already paying for a million dollar plus police department. However, I didn't see the town of Rockingham coming to the village of Bellas Falls, although apparently the town of Westminster has come to us wanting to use policing services from the village of Bellas Falls. That might have been a more adequate way to go, and the conversations really should be had, I mean, real conversations about this, because we spent a lot to cover three-fifths of the town of Rockingham, because Bellas Falls is like thirty-two hundred people, and there are a couple, two thou, two thousand or so out there. It doesn't have to take merger. It has to take serious conversations between the trustees and the select board to provide better policing for every community there. For Saxon's River would need to have a contract, and we wouldn't need another contract, um, us, a municipal one, to cover an area like Bartonville. So I think that's what the future of our policing here in our community is, and we need to work towards that so everyone receives proper policing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Cast all the way back here in the corner.
I mean, I can be pretty loud. My wish was, oh, sorry, my name is...
My question was, oh, sorry. My name is Saxon. You know, the town of Bellows Falls. Well, he's on microphone. We can't hear you. Man, being quiet, not something I hear a lot.
Hopefully, this helps. Okay. So, my question was if we're appropriating six thousand dollars for a sheriff. You know, I mean, obviously, people who are who need help need the help. But specifically around the issue of drugs, policing isn't always going to solve that problem. So, I'm wondering, have you investigated other resources that might actually end the job then?
Peter?
We have, as Charlie Jaris mentioned, we have talked to the state police. That's they have the drunk passports out there. It's we have the same response unless you actually are willing to go to court. If they pick somebody up and willing to testify that that's what happens. You probably will get very little response.
What about social services?
We have, I think there's ten or twelve of these services that you just voted ninety-three thousand dollars for. Some of them do entertain the drug issue. So, the question should probably be posed to them.
Peter, and also, we did this year vote the money that came to the town of Rockingham from the opioid settlement. We did distribute to an organization here working on drug issues. And I think there's another settlement coming forward too. And that will also likely go in that direction. So, we are, there are some funds from the town going into the social services. We're dealing with helping people who are addicted to drugs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Dave Langford, rural Rockingham. I know Susan mentioned that the what we actually get would be negotiated. But could you or the sheriff's representative kind of scope out what six thousand dollars will buy us in terms of how much patrolling, how much call response, that sort of thing?
So, David, I think Sue said that it's going to cost sixty-two dollars an hour. So, basically, you're going to get.
But does that include response to calls for assistance? Or is that only patrolling?
I think we'll go to the Wyndham County Representative.
Thank you. I'm not a voter of Rockingham. So, do you need to vote?
No, you're all set.
Great. Mark Anderson, Wyndham County Sheriff. Thank you for having me here tonight to answer your question. It could. But that's also up to a decision by the board and what the town tells the board to negotiate the contract. We've had contracts ranging from full twenty-four seven police coverage, nine-on-one response, right down to we want to target these narrow issues and only target those narrow issues. I'm here to support rural communities. And we can talk about rural Rockingham. It's rural Wyndham County. Every community is having these discussions. And at the end of the day, there's an initiative that I'm working on right now to improve rural policing. The town of Rockingham has been invited to that initiative. This isn't a next year conversation. This is over time. So, this is very much an issue people are dealing with. What you choose to do today is up to you, by all means. My office is here to support the town of Rockingham and the villages within it in whatever way it makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? Cast right behind you here.
Thank you. My name is Charles Wright. I'm actually a new resident of Rockingham. Coming from out of state where we basically, if we needed to, we'd pick up phone and dial nine-one-one and somebody would respond. I guess my question is, I live in, not in one of the villages. I guess I'm rural Rockingham. If I pick up the phone and dial nine-one-one, what happens?
Well, I can tell you personally, if your house is on fire, you won't have to wait long. That's the good news.
So, to answer that, I think a lot would depend upon what you're calling for. Whether you're going to get response from the state police or not.
Is there a nine-one-one call center, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Someone who answered?
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
Barbara Turner, Bellows Falls. I wonder, I wanted to ask the sheriff, the success rate for when money is spent on this project or other towns are spending. How successful have the sheriff's deputies and activities been in decreasing drug activity and decreasing that kind of thing, which is what is being looked at? And will the six thousand dollars do their job?
Certainly. I don't have an exact number. We don't have a formula we can run to say what success is or isn't. To that end, when we talk about most public safety, public welfare issues. I usually go do a model. It's a three-pronged model. It's based on enforcement. It's based on education. It's based on engineering. So, a gentleman from Bellows Falls mentioned, are there social services? That's part of education. That's part of engineering. We're trying to come up with other ways. Do I think six thousand dollars?
Okay, hold on, please. That word?
I might be back.
I'm going this way. So, do I think six thousand dollars is going to be an effective intervention to solve the drug problem? I mean, that's like asking me to go blow up a balloon in the sky with my dart gun. It's just not going to happen. Is this a way for you to test the services my office can provide and see if it's a viable bet? Absolutely. Is it an opportunity for you to say that, you know what, maybe we want to explore the idea of working with the Bellows Falls Police Department? Absolutely. I enter one-year contracts all the time. And I'm not upset if you decide to go a different way. That's that's part of what we do. And part of my model is to deliver you an excellent service that keeps you coming back. Because if you're not happy, well, by the way, your voters are my job. So, my goal is to serve you, support you, and come up with a better way to deliver the services. But I'm not here to say we're going to solve the drug problem based on that funding. It's just, it's not a realistic expectation on the first year.
Any other questions or comments? Peter?
A query the sheriff's department in regard to Mr. Jaris' catalytic converter. Had he made the call to you, would you have probably done the same thing to state police said?
We would have shown up to say, this is happening. There are a lot of initiatives to combat that of catalytic converters. The difficulty that we have is that it's kind of spam email. Your spam filter gets better, then the spammers get better. It's certainly a back-and-forth game. So, we would have come, we would have collected information. We did, not in the too distant past, we did arrest one person who was trafficking numerous catalytic converters or targeting the precious metal dealers who are receiving them. We're working with the Federal Bureau of Investigation to try and go at this. Because this isn't just a rural Wyndham County issue. This is a national issue where they're then getting millions of dollars on a boat to ship somewhere else. So, this is a truly massive problem that we even don't have the resources in the state of Rock.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to, I mean, of course, we do have problems in many of our areas of drug dealing. That's not the only reason we are asking for this. We are concerned about the safety of people walking on our roads. Because there are speeders going by fifty, sixty miles an hour in a twenty-five mile zone. And we have narrow roads. And it's not just Bartsville. It is Cambridge Fort Road. It is Pleasant Valley Road. It is all the rural roads in town. That we are hoping that with this start of some funding. People who are habitually speeding will know there's a chance there will be a Wyndham County Sheriff's Department in town that maybe they get stopped once or twice. It might help. And again, it's a test. It really is a test to see what we can do in the future.
Nancy.
Nancy McCullough, Bellows Falls. Query you, did you go to the Bellows Falls Police Department?
We did in the past and shut down.
This time around? I mean, if you want fast response, you've got a few miles away. Whereas you've got the Wyndham County Sheriff is out in New Haven. Or maybe they're out on patrolling and stuff, but.
Nancy question, we did not query the Bellows Falls Police Department this time around. Because the only request they got was from rural Rockingham residents. The historical reason was, if you can remember fifteen, maybe twenty years ago, when it was brought up before and it's been voted down. Keep telling people this every time we talk about this. It's been voted down three or four different times. Because Rockingham does not want the Bellows Falls Police Department in their area. That's the sound that's the answer we've got in the past.
Right. I was village president seven, eight years ago. And the merger went down. But we have a new police chief. Personnel has changed. Times have changed. Anyway.
Cast, back here, please.
Thank you. My name is Kate Swinstead, and I'm on meeting house room. I'm a relatively new Rockinghammer as well. I moved all the way down from Chester. So, seventeen years in Chester. I grew up just outside of Chester, so like from the monitor. I had my first step living here in Rockingham. Love the town. Wonderful folks. It does seem like there is a larger conversation to be had. And I want to acknowledge the voices who are talking about other support services for folks who may need them or other opportunities. Hearing a lot of voices talking about, well, we've talked about this in the past or this or that. It sounds like it could be a time to have a new conversation. But this sounds like a really good place to start, and you can start here tonight. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Article eleven, motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars to fund a contract with Wyndham County Sheriff's for the purpose of providing public safety services. And the town of Rockingham with six thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. All those in favor would say aye. Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And Article eleven has now passed. We move on to Article twelve. Article twelve, shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote by Australian ballot all expenditures of public funds beginning in the twenty-twenty-four town meeting? Peter?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote by Australian ballot. All expenditures of public funds begin in the twenty-twenty-four town meeting.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote by Australian ballot all expenditures of public funds beginning in the twenty-twenty-four town meeting. Is there any discussion? Dennis.
Dennis, I represent here. I'm opposed to this article because this is a democratic primary bedrock meeting here. And if we had a great discussion on the budget tonight, even some of the people that I know are opposed are in favor of this article, got up and answered, got up and answered. Peter did a great job explaining it. We wouldn't get that next year. There'd be no discussion. There'd probably be nobody here. But I'm just in favor of, this is democracy in action. Like you.
Any other comments or questions?
Charles Wright again. Again, newbie here. Can somebody explain what an Australian ballot is?
That would be paper ballot voting tomorrow at the Sonic Temple is Australian ballot. Any other questions or comments? Cast right over here.
Steve Croftier. I actually had thought a lot about the last article. And came here tonight with the intention that we're voting against spending the six thousand dollars. Because I thought, as sorry as I felt for people that have speeders coming by their house. I thought it might not be an effective use of the money. And I listened to the comments here and changed my mind. That's the kind of thing that would never happen if we were only voting on that by the Australian ballot. So, I would urge you to defeat this.
Anything else? Right behind you, cast, please.
Hi, Wayne Blanchard. In the past, I would have agreed with the comments we just heard. But I think what changed my mind is when we were discussing quite years ago now about switching the school district budget to Australian ballot. I ran into a young, a young couple who had young kids at home. They said they were all in favor of coming to town meeting. But, you know, they weren't going to be able to make it. The other thing I would point out is that the vote that we had last year. It was probably maybe a hundred and fifty, and maybe that's what we have in the room right now. So, my guess is the people that like coming or coming and like are able to come to town meeting are here. But what about the other three hundred and fifty people who voted in favor of having an Australian ballot? So, I think I've changed my mind about the, granted, the discussion here is excellent. Nice to hear, you know, the board talk about what the plans are and so forth. I think that can still happen. There won't be as much of a discussion because not so much is at stake, I guess, right at this meeting. But I think in terms of democracy, I think we're leaving out a lot of people in town who either choose not to come to this meeting or are just unable, for whatever reason, to come here. If it's an Australian ballot, I assume they could also do, you know, request a ballot. And not have to come, you know, if they're unable to come in person. It's my thoughts.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm Jim Mitchell from Saxon River. I strongly believe that they should turn into Australian ballot. Because it opens the vote to everybody. There are many reasons why people are not here tonight. Some people are getting up work. Some people have kids and don't have childcare. Some people are elderly and can't make it. But all of those people can request an absentee ballot and vote. But I don't see any reason why you couldn't have the discussion on Monday nights. And then have the vote on Tuesday when everybody could vote like us.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm vehemently voting against this measure, and I encourage my neighbors to do so also. We have something that most places in this country and in this world don't have. We have the ability to come in this room and ask questions about the way that our tax expenditures are used. You can't do that on an Australian ballot. And I had heard the argument, oh, people can just come to the Select Board meetings and talk about it. Well, so can all the people who haven't come to town meeting tonight. But I still want the ability to come to this meeting and hear the questions that you have that I haven't thought of. And any questions I might have that you haven't thought of, and we can have a debate. That's what town meeting is for. That's what town meeting is for. So please join me in voting this town. Thank you.
Cass. Yes, and then.
I'm Barbara Charles Bellis Falls. Other towns have a meeting on Saturday. Our neighboring town, Westminster. Other towns provide childcare. Other towns have potlucks. Other towns do it differently. It doesn't have to be only this way or that way.
Laurel Green. I am also standing in, not in favor of this particular article. I'd like this voted down partly for some of the reasons that were just stated. There's many ways to do a town meeting. It doesn't have to be like this. I think it's interesting to notice that eighty chairs were set out, a bunch more got set out later and we still have people standing. There is some demand for seeing our neighbors, figuring out who the characters are in town, being changed, having our hearts and minds changed by hearing our neighbors speak up on issues. My concern is more not about this year or next year, but maybe a couple of years down the road as climate change hits us even harder and harder and harder. We're going to need to be able to pull together as a community. And this is a training ground for us to listen to each other and to build a resilient community. I think we need this and it's going to become a matter of life and death within a few unfortunately short years. It looks bad for the future. And we're in a lucky place in the U.S., but it's hitting everybody. There's no place it's going to be missed by climate change. And because of that, I think town meeting is essential.
Peter. Just a point of information, even if you do vote or want to vote for a string ballot, you will still have the meeting that we're having here tonight. The problem you don't have is you cannot change anything. At this meeting, we could reduce any of these articles we want to tonight, the change of tact. String ballot voted, if you go a string ballot, you're going to vote either up or down. That means it comes back to the board again, we go through another meeting and we play the game again. I can remember one year the school board did that for three times before people finally got frustrated and said, the hell with it, just pass the darn thing and get rid of it. So that's what the thing is. I, I, I'm not in favor of a string ballot voting. I rather this, this situation here where we can, you know, talk about things and have the opportunity to reduce an article if we wanted to it, but you can't direct it to select board. Where to take the money out, you can just say in general cut $200,000 out of the budget and we have to struggle to find out where we're going to do it. But it takes the onus off of you, but it puts it on us, so. Joel.
Joel, Saxons River. I kind of feel sorry for you, Peter, having to go back three or four times to do that. It's, it's tough having, we rework things, do a lot of business. One of the nice things about having the internet and Zoom is that people have the ability to hear and see the conversations that are going on. And having this kind of information be broadcast to everyone in the community gives them an opportunity when they can't be here. Because I bet there's a lot of people who couldn't navigate and want to sit in a confined space like this. Otherwise you might see maybe two, three times as many. And at times when things were a little bit more anxious at some of the meetings, there were a couple hundred people at the meetings. But in general, people like the ability to vote. And a democracy enables people to do that. A democracy doesn't dictate that you have to be in the same room and voting. Because an Australian ballot gives you the capability of voting for that and voting for what we want to vote for. And then if it doesn't go, you go back and you get something together and put it together that people will vote for. So I think this is the kind of thing that we truly do need and it's a long time coming. So I really appreciate anybody supporting us because it is what we need. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Cass.
Yeah, hi, Jerry Fox, Bell's Falls resident. And one of the things around accessibility that the bus companies do when they have public hearings, they send buses around to pick people up. And just like there were other comments about making accommodations, it would be great to have a few hundred people in the theater and have the kids down here with childcare and have, we have a local bus company. And that practice that Laurel was talking about, about the bus company knowing where the elders live that are not mobile and being able to transport them and bring them to a meeting, saying they would be brought to an emergency operations center if there was, you know, emergency evacuations. So there are, there are ways to address more participation.
Sue.
I just have a question that I didn't catch the story on NPR the other day, but there was a discussion about the fact that this is a town meeting that a lot of other towns are facing this problem. And people are, we're participating in Zoom meetings, but you can't at town meeting. Is there any efforts going on at the state? I'm looking at Wendy because I see her. Are there any efforts going on at the state level about in the future expanding the ability for Zoom voting or that type of voting at a, at a meeting like this for town meeting?
Right. I can't answer that. I'm sorry. I'm not on committee. I'm not aware. I'm sorry. I can let you know later, but that won't work for tonight.
Okay.
Ellen.
Ellen Howard, Rockingham. I just want to point out that we're going to be voting tomorrow by Australian ballot for a school budget that's double what we're voting here tonight. If we can do the school budget that way and nobody complains about that, I think we could do this budget by Australian ballot too. I mean, school budget's been done for many years and it's double what we're voting here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Carrie, I'm Hannah and I'm in Rockingham and I love town meeting. We've lived here for over forty years and we come every year. And I would miss the discussions. But we're kind of talking about, oh, wouldn't it be great if 200 people were here? We have, what, 3,000, 4,000 people in town? Going to 5,000. Sure they're not our holding age, but if, if we're happy with 200 people having a say on what our money is being spent on, I think we should be happy if we had more like 4,000 or 5,000 voting for it.
Hi, Catherine Duskin, Saxons River. I'm parish resident here as well and I have to say that I, I knew about Vermont town meeting culture even before I moved here and it has always struck me as something incredibly unique and valuable in a time when there are fewer and fewer people in person. I'm curious though, just about, I guess, the process, if, what the process would be for changing the meeting in some way to make it more accessible. So I guess I'm talking about the culture of the meeting itself. And would that be a select board question? Is this a motion that we can put now instead of voting up or down just on Australian ballot or not? You know, if we are invested in the culture, what does it look like to actually talk about changing the meeting to be more accessible, to have more of the kind of community experience that people are visiting?
Peter, I'm going to let you answer that. Yeah, we could we could discuss having this on another day. I know Westminster down here, they're a neighborhood town. They have it on a Saturday and they do the whole explain, then they vote on Tuesday like we're going to do tomorrow. I assume that's all done by a string ballot. Some of the stuff I think they do vote in person at the meeting on, on the day, on the Saturday. So there, as Lady said, there are different ways of doing this. So we could take your suggestions of how, what you'd like to see, but it would be under, not under this item, but under other business, you can make it up and make a suggestion that we investigate, look at that. Any other questions or comments?
Question. Just a question.
Bonnie.
Would it be appropriate to amend this in some way and say we vote that the select board consider changing the day of town meeting and allocating funds for transportation and childcare? Could, could we make an amendment here tonight?
I think what probably the best way would be, if that is your thought, would be to vote this article down and then under other business, which you could say, hey, we, you cannot appropriate any money to be spent though. That's the only, only thing under other business.
Could we just say, we, the voters request that the select board consider appropriating funds next year? Could we say something like that? Is that legal?
I think it's legal, but the real question in my eyes is whether we vote by Australian ballot or we, or we don't vote by Australian ballot. And that's what Article 12 really entails.
Right, but it's a kind of a tough either or, very divided feelings. And it seems like the issue is accessibility. And I feel strongly that this is a very important tradition and I hate to see it go by the wayside. I understand the convenience of Australian ballot and Zooming everything. But I don't think we should give this up. I don't, I just don't think we should give it up right now.
And Bonnie, it'd be my understanding that you would not give this up. What you will give up is the ability to change any one of the money articles, either to add money or subtract money from it. But you're still going to have discussion around every article that is going to appear on an Australian ballot.
Right, but people probably won't watch it if their vote doesn't matter that evening. That's just, just an observation there. Okay, thank you.
Joel, we'll go back to you one more time.
Thank you. I apologize for talking twice. And I appreciate the fact that it's extra work. I really do. And it is a lot of extra work to put in to, if they vote, if it gets voted down. But think about the fact that the number of years you've seen 50 people at these meetings and they voted on the entire town's budget because you couldn't make it or something came up, we had an illness in the family or your kids had to be someplace else. And the ability to listen to it, to watch what we can do now on Zoom and then vote on it the next day is absolutely a godsend. And what a phenomenal opportunity to expand the number of people who can be included and involved and even if it is remotely. So I appreciate the support on this because I know a lot of people in Rockingham would also like that support. Thank you.
Priscilla.
Priscilla Lambert, Rockingham, rural Rockingham. I would like to comment on this, you know, the school budget was voted down twice, yes. Every time we have to put it back on an Australian ballot, it costs more money. It's not just the fact that you're voting one day. You have a chance here at this meeting to either increase it, decrease it, or say you like it. But if you put it on an Australian ballot and you vote it down and it has to come back again for another vote, that's a whole another set of costs for everybody that's involved because you now have to start all over. You have to have the people deciding on other items to put out there, but you also have to have the cost of paper ballots and everything else that's going to be put out there for the second time and the third time, as you pointed out, for one of our school budgets. Thanks. So I would vote against it.
So I'd like to disagree with Oh, I'm sorry. Annie Howlett, Saxons River. I'd like to disagree with one of the words that Mr. Love used. I do understand the urge on many of your, in many of your minds to involve more people. But I don't think it's involvement. I think what we have here tonight is involvement. Thank you. Discussing, being serious about the matters of our town. And I think honestly, what it takes to turn out a big population is a serious question. Like, should we extend policing and how should we pay for it? I mean, you could, you could do a yes or no vote by Australian ballot, but it's completely different from the texture of the conversation tonight. So I'll be voting for continuing town meeting, the same town meeting we've had forever.
Any other questions or comments? Right over here.
Yes, Steve Croft. I really do feel for people that can't make it because of childcare issues or not being able to get out at night. But I look at the Zoom screen up there and there's one reporter and there's our senator who does not live in town. There's nobody that showed up as an interesting citizen. We couldn't make the meeting tonight, but wanted to know what was going on. And I'm sorry that that's the state of things, but that's what I see.
All the way back to Jamie, please.
Yeah, Jamie Barrett. So I've, I've been a resident here for 32 years. I'm on current career and a lot of my career took me out of town and village where I wasn't afforded to be at this meeting. But whenever I was home, I'm able to attend it, attend either a select ordinating village or a very important town meeting. I was here because it's part of your civic duty and it's part of our democracy that allows us to meet, have a civil conversation. Yes, heated at times when there's disagreements, but it's a right that we cannot afford to lose. So I do not agree with this.
Any other comments, questions? In the doorway, please.
Jamie Mitchell Love, sorry, for the second time, Saxons River. Clarification, my understanding is the vote is whether or not you have Australian ballot on Tuesday. Nowhere in here does it say that you will not have town meeting or that you will not show up on Monday night and have a very rich discussion. And then you could go home and think about it before you spend millions of dollars rather than voting on the spot, which I, I don't even purchase a refrigerator without one coming thinking about it. So I would appreciate it if we did put it on Australian ballot. We would keep the discussion, we would keep the town meeting, but you simply would vote the next day.
Any other questions or comments? Why don't we go to Bonnie, then we'll go to Wayne and then Wendy.
Yeah. This is just real quick. I would just like to remind everybody, Zoom may not be around forever, okay? It's great. I mean, I love it. I've got, I've got two select board meetings and three, sometimes four, when the regional meetings go to every month. I love the Zoom. But we're about to make a vote here that's going to last. And there may not always be this. Technology changes. It's reliant upon electricity. It's reliant upon airwaves and fiber optics and a lot of things that may not always be available or be operating in the way that we're accustomed to now. Thank you.
Wayne, please.
Really, just a point of information. I'm curious. It's directed at the people who want to come to town meeting are here tonight. And is there no way to hold an Australian ballot to decide this decision, to make this decision? Because like I said, as I pointed
To make this decision? Because like I said, as I pointed out, the vote was pretty overwhelming in favor of having an Australian ballot last year. So if, I don't understand the, if you made a, if you made a decision here to hold an Australian ballot to just make a decision about whether to continue this town meeting this way.
This vote tonight will be pretty real, either you vote in person, like we're doing tonight, for your vote on Australian ballot. Can I understand that? We can do either one, and do both. That does not negate the fact that we can have town meeting like we're having it today. Explain that once, that you can, you're gonna have this meeting, and then as, as she had said out there, Dan said, you're gonna vote the next day on it. My problem with that is, as Bonnie alluded to a prior thing, what about these people that don't have computers? How do they get the information? A lot of these people go to Australian ballot and vote no, just to vote no, because they don't like it. They don't go with the knowledge of what's been discussed here tonight. They go down there, most of them will vote no. I'll bet you times a 10%, I'll bet 20, 30, 40% tomorrow will vote no on the school budget without even having gone to the school board. In fact, I just got my school budget booked tonight, walking in the back door. They wouldn't tell, didn't tell anybody on the internet where they were posted. You had to go to Westminster down there and pick up your book. To me, that's not a problem. So. But we would, as, what is, I, I, you know, I'm voting on nothing tomorrow. Yeah.
Or Wendy, I guess, and we'll go to you, Chris.
Hello again, everybody. I'm Stew Lundy. I dispute Ms. Mitchell Love's assertion that those of us who are here tonight are only looking at this budget and reviewing it tonight to prepare for a vote tomorrow, potentially this. Have you all seen this? I've had it for about a week. You know where I got it? From the library. And you can do that, too. We're not all here just deciding tonight like we would a refrigerator. I don't really like that characterization. Anyway, with that, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
So the question has been called. It's a non-debatable motion. Takes two-thirds of the people sitting here to move the question. So all in favor of moving the question?
You need a second.
So motion has been made and seconded that we cease debate. Two-thirds of the majority of people here, all those in favor of stopping debate would say aye. Opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and debate has stopped. We'll move on to Article 12. Motion has been made and seconded that the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote by Australian ballot all expenditures of public funds beginning in the 2024 town meeting. All those in favor would say aye. Those opposed would say no. I'm, I'm confused on who has won this, so we will take out your voting card, please. I need that from JP's, please. I need two over there to count, please. I'm gonna go to the Division of the House. So Danny, you're gonna count over here if we pass. Okay, so everybody understands what you're voting on right now. Shall the voters, or the motion's been made and seconded that the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote by Australian ballot all expenditures of public funds beginning in the 2024 town meeting. So if you're in favor of going to Australian ballot, please raise your card now. And come in from the doorway, so there isn't any confusion, or we won't count you.
Have to be on one side of the floor.
One side or the other. Which side are we on? Can't be in the doorway.
No, left or right.
We need to be further in, so we won't lose count. One, two, three.
This is for Australian ballot. That is correct.
All the people over here holding up your ballots, if you're voting in favor of Australian ballot. Make this clear. Doesn't matter which side, voting up nice and high.
Sorry, you're against white.
Keep them up, please, everybody, for right now. Moderator, we have 25 on this side in favor. All those that would be opposed to this motion would now raise their card.
Mr. Moderator, what a motive guy. I thought I heard you saying voting in favor.
No, opposed to this. Thank you.
Who's counting this?
Just count, Pat.
I don't have, check the zero.
This table counts on this side of the ceiling.
Don't count, yeah.
Okay, let me try. One, two, three, four.
Mr. Moderator, I have 30. Okay, your reason, everybody put your hands down. So Article 12 has been defeated. In favor were 39 votes, opposed were 69 votes. So the article is completed. We'll move on to Article 13, which is to transact any other business deemed proper, but not involving the expenditure of town funds or any other business acted upon in the preceding articles. And before we go anywhere or too far, we do have some, some of our guests tonight. We have Representative Leslie Goman over in the corner. We have Senator Wendy Harrison. On the, on back, we have Senator Peter Haskins. Haskin, sorry. Anybody?
Michelle was here. She just left.
Okay, and, and Michelle, our other rep, was here, so I just wanna let you know, so if you have something you'd like to talk to about after the meeting or whatever, maybe you can hook up out in the hallway. Is there anything else to come before, under other business? Bonnie.
So now for other business, I'd like, not on. I'd like to propose perhaps a resolution that the select board be tasked with looking into the possibilities of increasing accessibility, perhaps changing the date and time of the town meeting, providing childcare and arranging transportation, and anything else that would add to making town meeting accessible and promote it heavily. I think a lot of people aren't aware of it, or they forget about it. I think it's lamentable that a small handful of people will make major decisions. And I think it's up to, up to us, all of us, and particularly your elected officials, to do everything to make sure everyone feels welcome and is able to participate in our democracy. Thank you.
Peter. Just a point of information, some of you are already aware, the town did receive $440,000 worth of APF funds. Just so you know, what we are attempting to spend it on. $115,000 was set aside for replacement chassis for a Rockingham fire truck. When we got the estimate back, the $115,000 was for practice, $400,000 for labor. A new truck costs $500,000. So I guess we'll just put the $115,000 into a reserve fund and move forward from there, depending on how our fire equipment study. It's on, just a minute. We also appropriated $75,000 for first phase, the town hall roof project. We all know that this roof leaks. If you look around, you've been in some areas of this town, you'll see water stains and paint peeling off of the ceilings. $150,000 is also going towards the match that we have to come up with for the Rockingham Meeting House, to get that other half grand. And $100,000 is, is, is appropriate, or attempted to be appropriate for the train station, phase one repairs.
Yes. Yes, you want to give it?
Yeah.
I'd like to second Bonnie's motion, if it was a motion.
Resolution?
Well.
Well, I think it's the select board, so I, I'm assuming that they've heard us loud and clear.
I would like to make a motion that the, I, I guess the select board is the, is the right vehicle, but I'd like to make a motion to the select board to invest, study ways to make town meeting more accessible to more of our fellow citizens, and that we look to increasing attendance at town meeting in the future.
I'll second that, love.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded that the select board would be assigned the task of looking to increase attendance at town meeting. Need discussion on that motion. Seeing that, all those in favor would say aye. Opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. You have an assignment selected. Any other business? Danny.
Do we meet upstairs next year?
Yes.
Annie Allen, I'd just like to thank our new moderator and also the select board for a great year.
Thank you.
Anything else under other business? Yeah.
All I would like to say is, I've come here for many years, and I really, really miss Doug McPhee this year. He was the first one to ask questions. He always had something to say, and I don't know if he's in Florida or where he is at this point. I figured that's probably the case, because the, the P's are there, too. But I really miss Doug McPhee. He always spent time, thank you, spent time and consideration on our budgets every year, and has some, some very insightful, sometimes questions about it, and I, I missed him not going first on Article Number Five. That was it.
Anything else? Motion been made, seconded, that we adjourn prior to that. In about seven to 10 minutes, we will start the school portion of this meeting. I'd like to call the 2023 Town of Rockingham School District Meeting to order. Again, I'm Paul Bohuski. I will be the moderator for this school district meeting. I was appointed by the board to fill in for Ray Masuko, your elected school district moderator who's passed away. Will operate under all the same rules that we operated under for the town. I can either go through those. I talked a little bit with Priscilla, and her suggestion was almost everybody sat here already and has gone through the town and understand what the rules will be. And therefore, I'm going to move on, and at this time, I'm going, I'd like to ask Priscilla Lambert, Chairman of the Board, to introduce her fellow board members and other officials from the Rockingham School District.
Is this working?
Yep.
Okay, to my far right, at the end of the table, is Jim McCollum. Next to him, Bill Morse. Next is Caitlin Deschain Desmond. I'm Priscilla Lambert. Next is Andy Haas, our superintendent. Next is Chris Kibbe. And then at the end of the table is Jim Visina, our business manager. In the audience, we have our principals, if they would stand, please, Carrie Kennedy from Central, Laura Hazard from Saxton's River, and Henry Bailey from the middle school. Next to him, we also have our tech person at, at the central office. Keeps us in, in our places.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla. I'd like to also highlight that tonight's meeting has a Zoom link, but also highlight that voting by Zoom is not permitted. At this time, the warning for tonight, tomorrow, has an introductory paragraph which reads as follows. "The legal voters of the Town of Rockingham School District are hereby notified and warned to meet in the theater at the Bell's Falls Hall Auditorium, Fall Cinema, with Zoom, Zoom available in said town on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM to act upon all matters which shall be voted upon by actualization, excuse me, and not otherwise to be voted upon by Australian ballot, and then adjourn to the Masonic Temple in said town on or before Tuesday, March 7, 2023, to vote by Australian ballot on arti, on the articles." Or Article Number Eight, sorry. Now, the warning stated that we would be meeting upstairs in the theater. So when this came to light, or I, I realized that this morning, when I was getting ready for this meeting, we contacted the Secretary of State, just to make sure that the, where we were going to hold the meeting, we were going to be fine. And we sent a email to the Secretary of State, Kathleen Nehock, town clerk, for me, and basically said that we're down a couple of floors compared to where the warning says we're going to meet. The suggestion from Secretary of State, first of all, here's, this is what his response was. First, if it's in the same physical address, not necessarily a huge issue, I would put a sign at the theater location saying to go to the Lower Theater. And so that was accomplished, just, just to let everybody know, so we did not run into a problem in the future or later on with any of these votes that are gonna take place, because they're going to state that the warning, that they were, we were not at the location that the warning said we would be at. So I'm going to move to Article One. Article One is to hear the reports of the Rockingham Town School District Officers and to take action thereupon, Priscilla. and to take action thereupon, Priscilla.
I move that we hear the report of the Rockingham Town School District Officers and we approve their reports.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to hear the reports of the Rockingham Town School District Officers and to take action thereupon.
I'd like to speak to that. My full report is in the annual report and budget review booklet along with other reports from the school. In summary, my report would be, we are thankful that our schools and our meeting tonight can be held in person. The school staff is working hard to overcome inconsistent educational opportunities and motivate students to their highest potential. Family and community support is helping students and staff to meet the challenges that are faced in programming this year. We're bringing a realistic budget that will support students that is based on need. Health insurance needs and admission of a tuition cost, increased salaries and inflation costs caused a moderate increase from last year but continue to be lower than two years ago. More on the budget will be addressed under motions. Thank you for all the work done by principals Laura Hazard, Carrie Kennedy, and Henry Bailey, business manager Jim Bassina, superintendent Andy Haas, and board members Chris Kibbe, Jim McCollum, Bill Morse, and Caitlin Deschaine Desmond. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Article One? Seeing none, Article One, a motion has been made and seconded to hear the reports of the Rockingham Town School District Officers and to take action, which would be to accept the reports. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article One is passed. Moving on to Article Two, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in fiscal year 2025 in order to reduce taxes. Bill.
I move that the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2025 in order to reduce taxes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2025 in order to reduce taxes.
I'd like to speak to that.
Priscilla.
Last year, we had a surplus plus in June 2022. This is where the money is coming from. Article Two and the next articles, three through six, take a large portion of that surplus from last year and spread it over the next few years to allow your taxes to remain at a lower and consistent level. We've used $350,000 of that surplus toward this year so that your taxes are actually lower this next year. The rest of it, we've, a lot of it, we've put in these motions to be able to reduce it and, like I said, let your taxes be consistent. These sums are added to what you approved at last year's town meeting. So there's even more that will offset your taxes in the years to come.
Is there any discussion or questions on Article Two? Seeing none, a motion has been made and seconded to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2025 in order to reduce taxes. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we have passed Article Two. We'll move on to Article Three to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2026 in order to reduce taxes. Jim?
Yes, I move that the voters approve the Rockingham Town School District to apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2026 in order to reduce taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2026 in order to reduce taxes. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Don Taylor, Rockingham. Just a quick question. Is that says funds, they kept someplace where we're gaining any interest on them or anything like that? Or are they just sitting there?
They are earning interest. And in next year's budget, you'll see, and with the capital reserve funding, the interest that's earned for that year as well.
Any other questions?
I have a point of order question. We're voting on these tomorrow by Australian ballot. Not voting tonight.
No.
We are voting tonight. The only article that you're voting on tomorrow is the overall main budget, Article Eight.
A lot of people left here confused. They didn't get that.
I think it was unfortunate that somebody said that that in the discussion of the Australian ballot versus in here, that you're going to get to vote on, you're going to get to vote on the budget, which is bigger than the.
No, I know. It's just unfortunate that the people who left said, oh, well, there is nothing, there is no, anyway.
Good.
I'm very unfortunate.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, Article Three, the motion has been made and seconded to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2026 in order to reduce taxes. All those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we have passed Article Three. Moving on to Article Four. Article Four, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year of 2027 in order to reduce taxes. Chris.
I move that the Rockingham Town School District apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2027 in order to reduce taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150 from the fiscal year 2020 balance fund to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2027 in order to reduce taxes. Is there any discussion?
$150,000.
I'm sorry, $150,000. Thank you, Jigs. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we pass Article Four. Article Five, to see if the Rockingham School District will apply the sum of $300,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2028 in order to reduce taxes.
I move the Rockingham Town School District to apply the sum of $300,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2028 in order to reduce taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $300,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in fiscal year 2028 in order to reduce taxes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we have passed Article Number Five. Moving on to Article Number Six, is to see if the Rockingham School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2029 in order to reduce taxes. Priscilla.
I move that the Rockingham Town School District apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2029 in order to reduce taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $150,000 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to offset expenditures in the fiscal year 2029 in order to reduce taxes. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we pass Article Number Six. Moving on to Article Number Seven, to see if the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $929,935 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to create a reserve to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham Schools and to authorize the board to expend said funds. Chris?
I move that the Rockingham Town School District apply the sum of $929,935 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to create a reserve to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham Schools and authorize the board to expend such funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded that the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $929,935 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to create a reserve to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham Schools and to authorize the board to expend such or said funds. Is there any discussion? Chris?
So I'll speak to this a little bit. This is the, I guess, third year in a row that funds have been set aside for capital projects. And if this is approved, it will be a pretty healthy balance of over $1.8 million. There are a number of projects going on now that are actually, we hope to fund with ESSR money and grant money. But there are also some other projects that, in the future, we'll be working on. Some repairs like doors, steps at the middle school. The middle school auditorium has been a subject of what kind of improvements to make. And I kind of hate to bring it up, but, you know, we're in the process of having the schools tested for PCBs. Starting to roll out, I guess. And we don't know anything. We don't, we don't know anything. We don't know whether there's any problem. But if we do have to do some remediation, that is going to fall back on the school districts. And it's not a bad time to have a nice piece of cash set aside in case we have to. So I think we'll kind of wait and see on that.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, just second, if you would, till Mike gets to you.
Sure. Guy Payne from Saxton. I'm just questioning in terms of any kind of analysis that has been done on the ventilation systems in terms of CO2 levels. I know in Rattleboro, there have been significant problems. And I'm just wondering what kind of tests and analyses have been done on the ventilation systems?
Priscilla, would you like to direct that to somebody on the board? Or you can answer that?
I'm trying to figure which one's the best one to answer that. We've just done some touring of the buildings and looked at things, and there's a lot to do. Would you like to try to fill that one?
As far as, as far as testing for CO2 levels, we have not, my knowledge, we have not done anything directly of that. We are just bringing on a gentleman to be a project manager to help oversee a lot of these ESSR projects that we're doing. So that'll be something we'll probably task him with is, because HVAC systems are a huge investment that we're looking to use ESSR funds for. So that will be part of what we do.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments on Article Seven? If not, the motion has been made and seconded that the Rockingham Town School District will apply the sum of $929,935 from the fiscal year 2022 fund balance to create a reserve to be used for capital improvements at the Rockingham Schools and to authorize the board to expend said funds. All those in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article Seven has passed. We'll move on to Article Eight, which is a discussion only.
Yes.
Shall the voters of the Rockingham Town School District approve the school board to expend $10,246,454, which is the amount that the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? Again, this is by Australian ballot. It will be discussion only, and I'm looking, I believe, at Jigs to talk about this a little bit.
Do all of you have a copy of this year's annual report? A gentleman earlier showed me last year's report, so I don't know where that.
A few up here, so this is the cover.
But.
It doesn't have the, it doesn't have the color pages in it, so I have a few up here.
Yeah, I'm told too that these were available at all the town offices, the town halls, on the website, at Lee Size, and at the high school. I wanted to put that out there because somebody said that they weren't out where anyone could get them.
You have an old one.
Yeah, thank you, Pat.
Did you get one? Yeah, okay. It's important to look at this one because I'm going to refer to page 37. And 37, our report goes from 37 to 49. And, but 37 is the only one that's numbered. So I'll try not to make it too confusing. But if you'll look, if you'll turn the page from 37 to what I deem to be 38. to what I deem to be thirty-eight, you'll see the Rockingham operational budgets. And it shows the actual expenditures for 2022, the adopted budget for twenty-three, the proposed budget for twenty-four, and the difference. If you look at the bottom line, you'll see that the proposed budget for 2024 is $10,246,454. The column to the right shows that as an increase of four hundred, $548,480. The the next several pages provide a great deal of information and breakdown of these functional cost areas. But what I would like to do very briefly is to is to tell you what were the drivers of that $540, roughly $550,000 increase. So if you would turn to the next page, which is the Rockingham operating budget. The first block, lines one through fifteen, is all of the various salaries. And you'll notice at the far right that that budget is up $208,000. We negotiated a new contract this past year, and the the wage increase that was was negotiated was roughly two and a half percent with another percent in step increases. So that's one of the big items. The second item is the cost of health insurance. I think you heard it earlier at the select board meeting. If you look at pay, if you look at line seventeen, you'll see that our health insurance costs alone were up $289,759. So those two items total $500,000. The third area was a function of mistakes that were made in the preparation of last year's budget. If you were to look on the same page, this page thirty-nine, which I'm calling it, and you look at line thirty-five, this is the tuition that we pay for preschool children to get the go-to daycare centers. And you'll see that it's, our budget is $150,000 for next year, and it's a $150,000 increase. Well, our budget was not zero. This year, we are paying the tuition for the kids. And so that was an error. It was inadvertently left off of last year's budget. One other item that I wanted to highlight in the middle school, we have a sports program. And the budget for our sports program in our 2024 budget is $61,000. That pays for coaching, referees, materials and supplies. That was dropped off of last year's budget. So the, it shows as an increase of $61,000, which in fact is not the case because we had a robust sports program at the middle school this year, and we are paying in the order of $60,000 for that. So, so again, those three items total roughly $650,000 of of an increase of $550,000, so. Anyway, so that's a look at the expenses. If you look through that budget, the next six pages have a breakdown of the expenses for each of our three schools, Central, Saxon River, and the middle school. So there's a lot of detail there. There's a lot of detail in here thanks to our new business manager, Jim Zina, who has done a phenomenal job in helping us get our our budgets straight. I can assure you, we won't be dropping items in in the budget that we're proposing here tonight. If you turn to page forty-nine, which is the last page in the Rockingham report, and it's got some yellow on it. This is kind of a tax sheet. And you'll see at the very top the $10,246,454 budget on line one. We then have revenues on line ten. It's $1,734,000. But that revenue account, there's two key items in that revenue. There's a roughly a million dollars in tuition that we collect primarily from Westminster, Athens, and Grafton for seventh and eighth graders that go to to middle school. The other $700,000 is prior surpluses. It's $350,000 from the 2021 surplus and another $350,000 from the 2022 surplus. So that that 1.7 million of revenues brings our ed spending, which is a key number line fourteen, to eight and a half million. You look just to the left, you'll see that our ed spending last year was $8,526,000. So we're actually down just a little bit. Our, our, the next line sixteen, which is more information than you need, is our ed spending for pupil. That is up from last year because the way the state calculates equalized pupils, our student the number of students has dropped twenty-four and a half students. So even though the denominator, the numerator is down a little bit, the denominator is also down quite a bit. But still, at $18,580,000, that still compares pretty well to the 2021 number, which was was higher than that. The, because of that, we don't, we can't give a tax rate because the state obviously funds education, and we have to wait for the state yield to be published. But it would, it would appear here that there'd be little or no increase and perhaps a slight decrease in the school portion of the budget. So I'll stop at that and welcome any questions. I'm sorry you didn't get this booklet sooner. It was distributed. I know we had copies. It's a school department. Where else did we have? We had copies at the.
The town halls. Lee Size, the high school.
So any other questions, comments from the from the public?
Is there any way to email those budgets out to all the parents, listeners, or users? The.
I would think that would be a huge email.
No, we had, we had emails about other things, both emails.
I, I, I don't think that's unnecessary, I mean, a big ask. I mean, I don't think it's something we had thought of.
We got updates, though.
Yeah.
Calendar updates, we get updates, though, so everything else besides the budget, so it's all on.
Something to mention.
Maybe even even an email to tell them how how to go to the website to to find it.
Yeah, that might be the other way to go, Priscilla.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Again, this is Article number eight. It will be voted on tomorrow by Australian ballot at the Masonic Temple. Any other questions, comments at all? If not, I'm going to move on to Article nine. Article nine. Shall the voters approve the annual compensation of school directors in the amount of board chair $800, board members $700, treasurer $500. Phil?
I move that the voters approve an annual compensation to school directors in the amount of board chair $800, board members $700, and treasurer $500.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded that the voters approve the annual compensation for school directors in the amount of board chair $800, board members $700, and treasurer $500. Is there any discussion? Any comments? Bearing none, all in favor of the motion would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed would say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you accepted Article number nine. Article number ten. The transact, any other business to be brought before the town school district meeting? Is there any other business that needs to come before?
If no one else has one, I I would encourage everyone to, I think Paul has done a tremendous job tonight in in moderating for us, and due to an oversight, we do not have anybody on our ballot for school moderator for next year. Paul had his his in for the town. What if you could also write Paul Ovahostie in for our town moderator? Then we would not have to appoint him sometime during the year, so it would be really helpful.
Any other other business? Yes, that's.
Hi, Betsy Firstin, Bell Falls. I just wondered if you could speak a little bit about the ESAR funds. I I keep hearing that the school has gotten many millions of dollars, and I'm just curious what your plans are for them. If you could share some.
Yeah, so we've gotten in total just over $20 million of the three ESAR funds. And ESAR one finished up in September of this year, and that was all about recovery and getting going. So it was a lot of just getting the schools clean at the time. That's what we thought. That's what the funds were, you know, or that's what needed to happen for the virus. The second one was about getting kids back in school and getting schools back up and running. So we invested a lot in social, emotional and trying to get our, you know, making sure our kids had the right supports, because if they're not able to learn, then they're not gonna learn. And and so we've put a lot of, a lot of funds in there with with trying to put those supports in for students. And we're pivoting now into academics and to start addressing even more the loss of learning. We also ran summer programming and after-school programming to address loss of learning with students. And now that we're getting into the the depths of the RPES, which is the last one, a lot of it is about infrastructure. So we are looking at what started out as a $2 million proposed budget with an HVAC system at the high school. We're now getting numbers back closer to $4 million. We're looking at roof repairs at the middle school and at Central Elementary School and the high school potentially. We don't know just how with that HVAC system. That's why there's a bond out there for the high school because ESARs do have an end date, and we just don't know. We are also looking at some redesign and some safety features at some of our buildings so that we can put, add more cameras, but we can also increase security locks on doors. And then at a few of our schools, looking at actually redesigning entrances because they don't have line of sight or they only have a single entrance, like Saxon's River Elementary School has a single door. So once someone is through that door, they're into our building, and so we're looking at adjusting that. So there's also on our website, there is a whole list of, we have many projects that have even been conceptually approved, more more than even monies we have. And so now we're getting the bids back in of what we're looking to do. We're also looking at purchasing some buses because we haven't purchased buses in a few years, and our fleet gets old. And so we are, you know, that's a huge investment. And one bus alone is about $126,000 now, so.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and a kid, yeah, thank you. We're looking at revamping the whole kitchen at Central Elementary School. And that's a project we're thinking is gonna happen even this summer.
Any other other business?
Just wondering about buses. Are you looking at electric buses?
We we did not look at electric buses, only partially because of cost prohibitive. They they were quite a lot more. We did, we did do some preliminary looks last year as I came on. The other piece is, there's not a lot of places, if you've got to go on a field trip, to plug a bus in. And so they have a limited span that they can actually drive. And so it was the recommendation from our transportation folks that we not look at electric buses at this time. But it continues our investment in propane, but also in diesel, so.
Anything else?
Scott, what is the status of the early childhood work that had been done earlier? Where would we be going?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So as far as looking at building or designing a a separate site that would just house early childhood learning center, that was, we moved away from that and are looking at how we could use the space within our buildings to provide that. So this coming year, we're actually going to be piloting an expansion classroom at Central Elementary School to to expand it out. We're gonna be offering, Jennifer's here, so I'm gonna look to her if I get it wrong. You just throw something here if I get it wrong here. But we're, preschool is now gonna be five days a week, full days, where it had been a reduced day. We're gonna, as I said, we're gonna be offering a whole other classroom to take on an additional thirteen, fourteen kids, hopefully. Okay. We're still running a classroom at the Westminster School also, but now we'll be expanding as well to full day and five days, five days a week. So in the past, we would have students come in, like our three-year-olds would only come in two days a week, and our four-year-olds would come in three days a week or or some combination of that. So now all the students will have access five days a week, if that's what the family's looking to do. And the expansion is actually being covered a lot through Medicaid funds that we have that have been building up. So we get reimbursement from Medicaid from special education services. And so we're able to expand without actually increasing any costs.
I think registration is starting to be open for now.
It started this week.
And if people, parents are out there that are interested, what should they do?
They should.
Jennifer, just one minute. I apologize to you. Jennifer is actually under WNSU because it's a preschool program, but she is in our central school, so I should have introduced her at the beginning. So if you would, could name and if and talk about that, please.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jennifer Keenan, the earlier principal, Priscilla. We are expanding just like Andy said, and registration just started this week. And the forms will all be on our website by then, we, Kate. And I did a giant email blast today to all of the preschool people on my database. So if you didn't get a form and you have a preschool-aged child, you could send me an email, jennifer.keanan@wsc.com.
And and paper flyers went home Friday, correct?
Yep, paper flyers went home in every elementary backpack. And emails went out, and we're actually gonna do a snail. And emails went out and we're actually gonna do a snail mail now also, for trying to cover as many bases as possible.
Anything else under other business?
Something. Alex Stratten, Bellas Falls, parent, resident. Do you guys as a board plan on doing a, I don't know if you've done a survey in the past, a survey specifically for the parents of the school, see if they feel like that their, the level of communication between the parents and the administration is up to par, whether or not they feel like that the, that the school, that their child knows to, that they feel a part of that school. If, because I, I speak as a parent, I feel alienated from the school. And, you know, we pay a lot of money and I, I just feel like the community as a whole, I think there's a lot of division between teachers, administration, parents. And I think there needs to be a lot of building, a lot of healing that needs to go on. Because what happens is our kids suffer because there's a lot of infighting that's going on and money gets wasted and parents don't feel like they're being heard. And I feel that way and I might be the only one. So that's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking the board, is that reflected on the next board, to really sort of send their mission on trying to bridge those gaps.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Communication is one of our, our board goals, but it's, as far as surveys and that kind of thing, I'm gonna have to turn it over to our superintendent because those would come out from the school.
I, I mean, real quickly, Alex, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a great ask. We've, we've been talking about how we can increase our engagement with families. Honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hear that because I, the, the feedback I've been hearing is the communication has been better. So I'm, but I just hadn't heard that, so, but we can definitely get better with her. I think a survey, just having those same asks is something that we can easily get out there because we can always, that feedback is what we need to, to get better, so.
Anything else? Anything else under other business?
The only thing I would say is that, yes, we, we have two board positions open that are on the ballot tomorrow and we have Bill Morris and Caitlin Desmond, Deshane Desmond, excuse me, running for those two positions unopposed. So please vote and vote for our budget.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded that we would adjourn. All those in favor would say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.